For being in attendance in person and for those who are viewing online or through YouTube, we will call this Board of Weber County Commissioners to order dated this 12th day of December 2017 at 10:00 in the morning. In attendance today are Commissioner Gibson and myself, Commissioner Ebert. We also have Commissioner Harvey attending on the phone. Commissioner Harvey, can you hear us? Okay, sir?
It's a little soft for me, but I'll clean some of the wax out of my ears and do my best.
Wonderful. That's amazing. Thank you for sharing that. And again, welcome. We'll start today with a moment of silence and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance that will be, we will be led by Shelley Halcy and then Commissioner Gibson will give us the thought of the day. For those of you who are aware of the concerns in the incident in New York, many of the New York, our fellow New Yorkers are going through difficulties as they, you know, many times are the target of terrorism from around the world. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence for those that have been involved. Thank you very much. Shelley.
Will the audience please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibson.
Commissioner? Well, if I could, if I've ever had a bittersweet moment and day, it's probably today. Not very often in a person's life do they make a major, or at least in my life, have I made major changes in the direction of my life. And today is one of those. If you haven't seen the news this morning, I announced that I would resign my seat on the commission in about a month to accept a position at the Department of Natural Resources in, down in Salt Lake. And I am just super grateful for the opportunity that I've had to, to serve here in Weber County. I have thoroughly enjoyed the assignments that have come my way as part of this, part of this job. But most of all, I've realized that it's not just a job, that it's, it's something that is, that is dear to my heart. It's a, it's a community that I love. Other than two years in a foreign country, serving my church, I've lived here my entire life. And I care deeply for the people that are here and for the, the wonderful opportunities that I've had to, to serve and be a part of this great place. And I just want to take this opportunity especially to thank the great employees at Weber County, the great individuals who I've had the opportunity to work with. They go about their work in such a tremendous manner. They are so professional at what they do. They are good at what they do. They are people that I look up to and want to be more like. They have made me a better person because I've been able to work with them. And some of them are here today and many of them aren't, so I want to tell them thanks. And when I, when I say that, it's, we, they may not even be employees of Weber County as a whole specifically, but, you know, I'm looking at some folks in the back here from Weber Fire District and, and some, our 911 dispatchers and just the whole, whether they work specifically for Weber County, it's, it's great employees that work with us, that help us to accomplish our goals. Most of all, I'm grateful for the people of Weber County for giving me the opportunity to serve and I hope that I've been able to make them proud and do some things that have been important to them. And yet, at the same time, I have never really, I've, I've found over my life that, that times, sometimes life doesn't always go exactly according to our schedules and our plans. And oftentimes, opportunities come to us when they are least expected. And we have to be prepared and ready to do what we think is best and what we think we can be the most good and the most service oriented at a particular time. And at this time, I'm just really grateful for Director Styler and, and Governor Herbert for having faith in me and giving me the opportunity to serve on a state level. And I'm looking forward to the great people, to working with the great people that I know I'll encounter in the Department of Natural Resources as well. So, just as a really quick closing to that, I think one of the, one of the benefits of making a major change is the, is the opportunity to reevaluate some things that are important and, and reminding yourself what things really are the most important to you in your life. I was sharing with Commissioner Ebert this morning, it's a little bit of a challenge for me as I have now entered the phase where all my kids are leaving the house when I thought they would never leave. And kind of thought maybe it wouldn't be a bad thing if they did. Now they're leaving and I'm feeling a little guilty that I haven't always been the type of father and husband that I need to be. And I'm grateful for opportunities of reflection that helped me to step back and say to myself what things are really important to me. And then for the courage to be able to go forward and do those things. So, Commissioner, thank you for giving me the opportunity to say thanks to people that I care about and love and appreciate. And Weber County is in good hands and I appreciate all that each of you do to make sure that happens. Thank you, Commissioner.
If you wouldn't mind joining me in a, a moment to recognize the years of service that Commissioner Gibson, and before that Representative Gibson, and moving on to greener pastures as Deputy Director. Gibson, if you'd join me in a round of applause. I will tell you, it takes a certain personality, a certain amount of thick skin, a certain ability to make difficult decisions to be an elected official. In my opinion, there's a big difference between a politician and elected official. A politician makes a decision that's in his best interest, that's the easiest decision at the moment. An elected official makes decisions based upon what the right decision is and how to move your community forward, in whichever capacity you're serving in. So, much appreciation to those who strive to be elected officials. It's not always easy and you have to have thick skin. So, thank you very much for your years of service, sir. We will now move on to presentations. Under Presentations, number one, Presentation of a Resolution to Recognize the Last Week of October Each Year as the Opioid Addiction Awareness Week in Weber County. Interesting to me, I had an opportunity to spend several days at a poverty summit and one of the biggest issues and concerns dealing with poverty is illicit drugs. And at this point in time in our country, the opioid addiction rates are extremely high and it is the driver of most of our illicit drugs right now. And we as a community need to come together, we need to recognize it, and we need to come out of the shadows. Many times these addictions start through a very benign cause. Many folks go to their doctors, relying on their doctors to take care of them. And we recently passed a resolution to move forward with litigation with other counties and other states to address this issue. And it has tremendous effects on people's lives. Some very simple facts that I think really show the issue with opioids. In 2016, over 64,000 deaths were primarily driven by opioids. The use of fentanyl, opioids, and heroin are all continuing, continuing to increase, de-increase. From 1999 to 2015, the rate of deaths increased over 500% among women and 200% among men. Women with this disorder have higher rates of poverty and assorted indicators of low education and other things. One in eight children, or one in eight children have one or both parents in some type of drug treatment or drug disorder situation. Two million children live in homes with parents that have illicit drug disorders. 70% of women entering treatment have children. I cannot think of a cause more important today to address if we're really looking at our future. Understanding that in your first three years of life is when your brain is the most impressionable. You have over 1 million neurons that connect every second. And if we draw the line from children to mothers to drugs, we can really see the impact it has on us into the future. We were lucky enough to have some students at Weber State take this on and they made a great suggestion that I think we adopted last week, but I wanted to present today. This resolution really starts the county working towards recognizing the issue and working with other partners such as IHC and Weber State to start truly addressing this issue. And then working through other avenues such as litigation, working with our law enforcement partners. But probably the most important thing we can do is educate people on the dangers. So if you don't mind, I'd like to read this resolution. Whereas, on October 26, 2017, the President of the United States declared the opioid addiction crisis occurring throughout the country as a public health emergency. And whereas opioid addiction is a growing problem nationally in Utah and locally in Weber County. And whereas it is reported that 91 Americans die every day from opioid overdoses. And whereas an average of six Utah residents die each week related to opioid overdoses. And whereas Utah continually ranks as one of the highest in the country for drug-related deaths, including opioid overdoses. And whereas the opioid addiction crisis has increased demands on local resources to address the problem, including mental health and social services, public health, housing, law enforcement, and correctional facilities. And whereas in combating the opioid addiction crisis in the future, an increase in public awareness and education about the dangers associated with opioid misuse is needed. And whereas public awareness and education must not only come from national and state level, it must also come from a local effort. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Weber County, Utah, that the last week of October each year should be recognized as Opioid Addiction Awareness Week in Weber County. As a commission, I believe Commissioner Gibson really touched on it last week. It's our responsibility as elected officials to set a direction and a vision. And I agree wholeheartedly with the words that Commissioner Gibson spoke to us last week about our commitment to continue moving this forward either through legal means or through education and through a better understanding. And so, I believe, did we adopt this resolution last week?
Different one.
Yeah. We'll have to put this on our action item for next week for an adoption and then move this forward. So, any thoughts?
Just quickly, I don't want to relitigate the, the resolution of last week. That was kind of a pun, I guess, accidentally, but I'll take it. But I, it just goes back to, to the thought process that makes sense to me. And that is, there is a time for debate and discussion and we've had a lot of that. And then there's a time for action. And in this case, when you believe in something, it, there comes a point when you have to take action and move forward. And I'm grateful for the support of the commission and moving forward with our resolution of last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was. And, and I think we're making the right decision in involving others at this point. I'm grateful for these Weber State kids for, for being excited about this and coming to the table because this is not something that a commission can do. This is something that a whole community must do together. And so, I appreciate you bringing this resolution forward as well on behalf of those students and, and appreciate their involvement.
Okay. Commissioner Gibson, I have number two, A Presentation of a Resolution Declaring That Freedom From Domestic Violence.
These individuals to have a sort of a platform or something that they want to talk about or have influence on in their, in their time in office. And if you can just, I guess maybe the stereotype didn't really fit for me, really. There was this big guy, he could crush me with his bare hand if he wanted to. And yet, the way that I see him treat people and especially women has always been a, a real inspiration to me. He's kind and gentle and loving and, and the man has a heart of gold, just an absolute heart of gold. And so, for some, it may have been a little bit of a shock when his presidential initiative was combating domestic violence. But for me, it wasn't because I got to know him well enough that it really wasn't a shock to me. And so, he asked us as part of his presidential initiative to, to move forward in all the counties with this resolution declaring freedom from domestic violence. And he helped us to prepare the resolution and then shepherded it through several counties who were able to pass it. We were a little slow getting this on our agenda, slower than we should have been, but, but I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to talk about this because unfortunately, it truly has become one of those epidemics in society that, that causes us major moral and ethical and societal ills. And so, I want to thank Mark, Commissioner Whitney from Beaver County for being willing to use his platform as our association president for something good. And with that, let me read to you the resolution that we have prepared today that we, that I'm hoping to have passed. It's a resolution declaring that freedom from domestic violence is fundamental human right and that local government has a responsibility in continuing to secure this right on behalf of our citizens. Whereas, according to the Utah Domestic Violence Council, one in three women and one in eight men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. Whereas, according to the Utah Domestic Violence Council, 42% of homicides in the state of Utah are domestic violence related. And whereas survivors of domestic violence must deal with the effects of physical injuries, long-term psychological damage, fiscal instability, and trouble finding safe housing. Whereas, police and sheriff's departments, courts, cities, and social service agencies, and other local government entities constitute the first line of defense against domestic violence. And whereas, police and sheriff's departments, courts, cities, social service agencies, and other local government entities incur significant monetary cost due to domestic violence. Whereas, world leaders and leaders within the United States recognize that domestic violence is a human rights concern. And whereas, the United Nations Declaration on Elimination of Violence Against Women, adopted in 1993, recognizes the urgent need for universal application of women to the rights and principles with regard to equality, security, liberty, integrity, and dignity of all human beings. Noted that these rights and principles are enshrined in the international instruments, including the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Whereas, the United Nations Commission on Human Rights condemned violence and human rights violations against women in March 1994. And whereas, by recognizing that domestic violence is a human rights issue, the Weber County Commission will raise awareness and enhance domestic violence education in communities, the public and private sectors, and within government agencies. So now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Weber County Commissioners in the state of Utah resolves as follows, that the Weber County, that Weber County declares freedom from domestic violence as a human right, as a fundamental human right. That Weber County declares state and local governments bear a responsibility to continue to secure this human right on behalf of our citizens. Dated this 12th day of December 2017 and signed by the Board of Weber County Commissioners. So, to the extent that we get to talk about this a little bit today and then vote on it tomorrow, I think, or next week I should say, I think is actually a positive theme because as we talk about these issues, we understand that they are real and that they are out there and we discuss them and steps to move forward that might help us. I think that that is definitely a step in the right direction as far as solving these types of problems. And when I look at the revolution, the resolution specifically, and it says that the Weber County Commission will raise awareness and enhance those types of educational opportunities, I guess maybe it's a good idea if we talk about it more than once, right? And so, with that, Mr. Chair, my suggestion is that we, that we place this back on our agenda for a action item in our next commission meeting and that we take action on it as a statement, a strong statement of support from this body and from the constituents that we represent of some of the things that are important to us and some of the actions that we intend to take to address these challenges.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibson. Commissioner Harvey, do you have any comments?
I fully support that action and appreciate us moving forward on that. I think that's great. Commissioner Gibson, thank you for bringing that forward in this local body, which we've known about for a year. That's awesome.
Thank you. We have a lot of things we're working on and a lot of opportunities to educate, so we will continue next week. We'll bring those back as action items. If you have no further comments, we'll move on to consent items. Under one is a request for approval of warrants 1288 through 1291 and 423525 through 423737 in the amount of $3,967,162.92. Item two is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $311,270. Item three is a request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on November 21st and 28th and December 5th, 2017. Item four is a request for approval of a new bear license. Item number five is a request for approval of new business licenses. Item number six is a request for Weber County Parks and Recreation Department for approval to serve plus a sharp copy machine. Item number seven is a request for approval to set the date of December 19th, 2017 at 10:00 a.m. for a public hearing regarding amendments to the operating and capital budget of Weber, of Weber County for the 2017 calendar year. Those are the consent items. Do you have any questions, commissioners, on the consent items? Hearing, no questions. Mr. Hatch, would you go over our PO and warrants?
Would love to. Thirteen purchase orders this past week for $311,000. Fifty-eight percent of that amount, or $180,000, was for the library and that was primarily, primarily to purchase furniture for the main branch renovation. Twenty percent, or $63,000, was for the Golden Spike and that is to purchase a tractor. Ten percent, or $30,000, was for the conference center and that is going towards a smart board that goes into the executive conference room. As far as checks, we wrote 217 checks this week for $4 million. The bulk of that amount, 72% or $2.9 million is reimbursement to Ogden City for the work that they are doing on Harrison Boulevard. This is the, the transportation tax funds. And then 13% or $535,000 was for the library and that was to, a payment towards the North Branch construction.
Thank you. Mr. Hatch, any questions about the PO or warrants, commissioners? Seeing no questions, I'm open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items as read and described.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 If you post, it passes unanimously with a late aye. Thank you, commissioners. We'll move to, under G for action items. Is there anyone here from the Convention and Visitors Bureau? We will hold this item till next week. We also have an amendment to their budget and we'll address both of those items next week. Moving to item number two, Request for Approval of Bylaws for the Weber County Creative Alliance. Jennifer Graham.
Good morning, commissioners. We're just looking for approval on some bylaws to move forward with the final stages of creating the Creative Alliance, Weber County Creative Alliance. These bylaws have been drafted by Chris Crockett, Christopher Crockett, in the attorney's office and have had some input in by the board, the board members that were appointed earlier this year. Now we'll be able to move forward with selecting officers and carrying on with our mission.
Well, thank you. For those who may not have an understanding of the Creative Alliance, Jennifer, would you feel comfortable just maybe touching on some of the goals and direction of the Creative Alliance?
Sure. The Creative Alliance, we needed a, we, we had a need for an arts council for a couple of different reasons. Some of it had to do with RAMP. But the group that we have involved in this, that's just one small portion of what they want to try and do. They really want to engage and start to develop with some economic, economic development is one of their goals, the creative culture in Weber County. And that's why instead of an arts council, they've decided their name is the Creative Alliance. And they are looking at all sorts and all forms of creativity, whether it's in manufacturing, architecture, the sciences, and then the normal disciplines as well. We really not only want to fit, find, find those things that aren't, that don't have a fit right now and make a, make a place for them, but also to support those that are already taking care of different needs in the community so that they can focus on their creative endeavors.
Thank you. And that's, most of that is covered under general purposes and objectives. For those who may be interested in the Creative Alliance or helping to strengthen a creative community, the mission, goals, and direction of the alliance is really lined out in the general purposes under Article III of the bylaws. Any questions, commissioners?
I have a question.
I have a.
As far as the bylaws are concerned, I don't see any, I, I like it. I don't see anything that causes me any heartburn. I guess my only, my only question is one of funding. How does this organization fund itself and how do we, how's that going to look going forward?
Well, a lot of their talk has been with, with getting some private and, private and corporate sponsorships and partnerships going. There is a, there is a small bit of funding within the county to help with the RAMP grant process for either county entities or individuals that aren't able to apply for RAMP grants themselves but have a valid project. That's a very small amount of funding. So really, it's going to be them looking for private and corporate sponsorships and donations as well as other state or other grants that we can come across.
Is there county funding involved at all?
The county, there's a small portion, I believe it's 18,000 in 2018, but like I said, that's kind of is earmarked for RAMP, helping with RAMP participation.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, no comments or questions? I think I heard you say that.
Yeah, I have no, I have no, I have no, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm open for a motion for approval of the bylaws for the Weber County Creative Alliance.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bylaws.
I'll make that motion that we approve the bylaws for the Creative Alliance.
And I'll second Commissioner Harvey's motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, and thank you, Commissioner Gibson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 It's just the same one he's here.
It passes. It passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jennifer. We'll move to item number three, Request for Approval of the New Policy Related to Approving Expenditures of County Funds. Mr. Scott Park.
Thank you, commissioners. So this policy is kind of a, an outgrowth of our switch in accounting system. So before, under our old accounting software, we had a centralized accounts payable process, which means all the invoices came into one spot and were processed by two individuals and paid. And we've moved to a decentralized process, which makes us a little more efficient and puts people who are closer to the transactions in the position to review and approve those expenditures. But what it's also highlighted is the need for us to have a standardized process across the county departments on how invoices are entered and paid in the accounting system. So that's what this policy does. It goes through and outlines the responsibilities of the department heads and their staff related to the approval of the expenditure of county funds. And just clarifies where those responsibilities lie and what things they should be looking for as they review invoices and enter them into the accounting system to get processed and paid.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Any questions for Mr. Park on the policy?
I don't know that I have a question. I've reviewed the policy and...
I don't know that I have a question. I've reviewed the policy and and uh, you know, I I just want to again offer my uh thanks to you, Scott. I, as we've gone through a difficult transition into a completely new system uh over the last little while, um, it has been uh a a benefit, I think, to our taxpayers and to our community to have uh that type of a of of better accounting. Uh, it's better, it's better for everybody involved, I think, and and your dogged persistence on the issue has been uh super positive and and as I read through this policy, um, I think you said it best when we first visited about it. Um, all of it is pretty well common sense that that, these are things that that we're doing anyway and should be doing anyway, but I think it's good to have things memorialized to the extent that we can. So that they um, they're obvious and they make sense and it gives them accountability and and I think it's, I think it's great. I can't see anything in the resol- or in the policy that that doesn't belong in the policy. And so I hope as time goes, if there are things that need to be added, you'll add them, but as 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 it is today, it sounds and feels right. So, thank you for putting forth the effort to make it work.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Harvey, any comments?
No. I'm, no questions.
Okay, open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, policy four point one, uh, related to approving expenditures of county funds.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion specific to the policy? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Thank you very much. Item number four, request for approval of a first reading of an ordinance of the county commissioners of Weber County establishing a Culture Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund. Mr. Park.
All right. What this ordinance would do is actually set a new county fund and carve out of the general fund all of the culture parks and recreation activities into its own fund. Um, there's a couple of reasons why we want to do this. Uh, first, it will make it more transparent the amount of money that is spent um on the culture parks and rec within the county. It will show what revenues they generate. It'll show if there's an operating loss and it'll show where the funding comes to cover that operating loss or the subsidies. Um, second, it makes it that uh, if we have a fund balance left over, at the end of the day, if Culture Parks and Rec is able to cover its operating costs, we can actually start to build a fund balance that would be then used to fund capital improvements, capital projects, give them a tool to start to save money for future repairs and maintenance. Um, and then uh, I'm sorry. Uh, and then it will also um let us highlight the extent that these uh programs require subsidies from the the general fund or any other fund. And uh we are actually hoping in about two thousand and twenty to be able to have the Parks and Rec funded entirely with its own generated revenues in the tourism tax fund and actually be able to end the operating subsidy from the general fund. So this uh sets up a fund that will help us track those revenues and those expenditures to make sure that we have good accountability and transparency in place for these uh funds going forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this first reading of the ordinance.
Commissioner Gibson.
I, um, I I'd like to comment if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Um, I know that this is uh, this particular uh item that Scott brought forth has had that, has had that good vetting from not just our finance committee, but also from our Culture Parks and Recreation Department and our CDB. We've had some uh, we've had some things to work through, but I think this is, represents a great compromise in us moving forward.
Commissioner Gibson.
I don't really have any uh questions. I I think it's, again, an example of of always trying to refine the way we account for taxpayer dollars and um, I think it's a good exercise and a good policy direction, so I'm I'm grateful and I'm, I support it.
Wonderful. I I think we've been talking about about this for over a year. There's been a tremendous amount of vetting. Um, and I think we've landed in a good spot, so I appreciate the work. If there's no further discussion, I'm open for the initial first reading motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading. What's the ordinance number? No ordinance?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? It passes first reading. Thank you very much. Mr. Park, number five, request for approval of a cooperative agreement between Weber County and Utah State University to provide cooperative extension services. Or Jennifer Graham. Apparently I wrote, I I I read that incorrectly. Jennifer Graham.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you. Um, as you know, uh, the county currently contracts with USU Extension Services to provide the extension office out of the fairgrounds. Um, we're just changing the structure of that contract a bit. Uh, currently, part of the expenses are USU expenses and part of them are county expenses and that can cause for some, a little bit of confusion, especially since some personnel are USU and some are county. And so this kind of cleans that up a little bit. We're increasing our contract amount, but we are just passing those responsibilities back to USU, so it's a net zero um change to the county's budget. With the one exception of we do have one employee that's within about six months of retirement, so we're going to work through this next contract year or so with her, so. At that point, everything would be then transferred over to USU.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for um Jennifer?
I just want to, I just want to mention that um I believe that one of the great strengths that we have in the county is our ability to accomplish things through good partnerships. I can give a few examples. Um, one is in our flood control project. I think we had something like ten different partners by the time we didn't, worked with federal agencies, state agencies, local, um, special districts, all kinds of things. We, there's a lot of things we can't do on our own and I am a huge.
Any opposed? Uh, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Item number six, request for approval of the Western Weber Park District two thousand and eighteen tax rate. Kathy Renault.
I got a comment on this one.
Gotcha. Uh-oh.
Is that all right if we both come up?
You can do whatever you want.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate you this morning, Mr. Weber, Kerry, Mr. Harvey. Thank you. So, Dwayne and I are here with the Weber County uh park board and we are um wanting, coming with you, for you and with you uh for a detailed budget. We ask that you approve our rate increase for the two thousand and eighteen year. The time to act is now. We need this year to gather our funds and prepare for our land acquisition. Our community comprises of Taylor and Wes Weber and Warren and um we are three unique little areas out there and our goal is to create a park for folks in our area to recreate and for our communities to come together. Our little piece of heaven out there is slowly being eaten up in development and the time to act is now. Um, we derived our hike from our neighboring community of West Warren and let's talk about our budget. So our first line is to reimburse Weber County. They have loaned us approximately fifty-five hundred dollars for, and that included um surveying, printing of ballots, mailing and council. We're going to need some, um, our second line of our budget, I think you have it before you, if I'm not mistaken, is um we're going to need some professional advice and some counsel. We've allotted twenty-five hundred dollars for a civil attorney to help us with our land acquisition. We're interested in acquiring land anywhere from eight to fifteen acres. We'd like you to consider the following and when we are looking, we would like to consider uh proximity to schools, to sewer, access to water. Um, and we will be contacting some donors to see if anyone is interested in our area in donating their land. And if that's the case, then that money would be put towards grants. Um, to uh for the creation, actually, of the park. But uh we're going to need open houses uh for our communities and a chance for them to gather and get and share their ideas with us and explain the budget uh to them, so they will be understanding that as well, so that everything's out in the open for them. We'll be working on developing a social media platform, again, to gather public input and for them and us to have a clear vision. We're setting up a time to visit with Steve Waltrip from the Ogden Valley as well as our neighbors in Roy and Plain City to get their ideas and gather information with them as to how they've done theirs. And we're going to, uh, thirdly, we're going to need an architect on board for some counsel because as these little cluster subdivisions gather in our little neighborhoods, we're going to need some definitions on what's right, sprinklers, lighting, parking, roads, trails, uh, pavilions, landscaping, and the list goes on. We're going to need some definite counsel on that. So we get good stuff, so it's put in once and once only. But the mat groundwork has got to be laid and the time to do it is now. And fourth, fourth, we want to put constraints on our little park board um with the budgeting and not go overboard this first year. We'll can, uh, we'll be saving the sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars in capital expenditures, um, because savings seems like the basic approach at this point where we are at. Um, if we're trying to find things to budget just for the sake of budgeting them in when we should be saving for land acquisition. So um, the time is now, a time of gathering uh funds, ideas and advice. So I'll just recap. Uh, reimburse Weber County fifty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred for a civil attorney, twenty-five hundred for an architect and save the sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars over for um land acquisition. Um, please approve our rate increase so the ball can get rolling. It's important to us and our community. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Gibson, Commissioner Harvey, comments?
Commissioner Harvey wanted to comment.
Commissioner. Sounds like he's in a bad spot right now. Do you want to, you want to go ahead, Commissioner Gibson, until he clears up?
For that district, moving forward and uh it it's also been the budget. I appreciate your work there. This is a lot better than the information we had a few weeks ago. I appreciate the work that's gone into it. Thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna not repeat a lot of what we said last time, other than um you're looking at a couple of people here who have worked super hard uh on behalf of this district and and their passion and their willingness to serve is is not unnoticed. And so I'm grateful for them bringing this forward and and a good plan and um it's kind of a weird thing that that a glitch in the law would require us to re, or glitch, I mean, it's just an odd thing that that we would be required to approve a different entity's budget, but but I think you've done a good job in in putting it together and and putting together a well-thought-out plan, so that's it, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? If not, I'm open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rate for the Western Weber Park District.
Do I have a second? I will second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, fought to my assist, roll call. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It passes. Thank you very much and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
I love the woo. Anyone else want to give us a woo? We'd appreciate it. Item number seven is a request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County approving and authorizing the execution of a seventh amended interlocal cooperative agreement with other members of the Utah County's indemnity pool relating to the establishment, funding and operation of the Utah County's indemnity pool. Uh, Mr. Chris Crockett.
I'm sorry, um, I think that there is a resolution that goes with this if you're accepting the tax rate. Is that correct? For point zero 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 three two five?
Yes.
So then I'm going to take a resolution on that. Sorry.
Okay. That's what I was.
That's what you, you knew that.
Okay. Can we amend that to a resolution instead of simple approval?
It'll be resolution fifty.
Five zero? Okay, uh, we have an amended motion to adopt.
I'm putting you on speaker, okay?
A resolution, resolution fifty, to adopt the tax rate as stated for the Western Weber Park District two thousand and eighteen tax rate. Commissioner Gibson, is that a reflection of your uh motion?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey? Commissioner Harvey?
Did you hang up on him?
I, I could hear.
There he is again.
So, do you want to come and say with speaker? Um, I did that.
Thank you. Hey Jim, let me put you on speaker, okay? Are you there?
Don't leave yet. It's not official.
Are you there, Jim? Yeah, I think you must be. Are you there?
Maybe. Let's move forward with the roll call and we can circle back if we need to.
Chair Weber?
Aye. It passes with one abstention at this point. Item number seven is a request for a resolution. I think I already read all the way through that. Chris Crockett, are you representing today?
Yes. So this is a amended, seventh amended interlocal cooperation agreement with the Utah County's indemnity pool. Um, there's only a few changes in here uh to make you aware of. Uh, the term trustees has been switched to directors and then the major textual change is found on page ten, which talks about if a member of the, of USIP terminates their relationship with USIP, that any continuing obligation of the pool to the member or of the member to the pool after the termination of the membership shall end.
Thank you. Explain, can you explain to me a circumstance where that might apply?
So previously, how it worked is if someone put in a notice of termination of their relationship with USIP, if there were any pending claims that were out there outstanding that have already been reserved for funds, that can, obligation would continue past the termination. But with this new amendment, that would not happen. Once the relationship is terminated, the obligation, um, there's no remaining equity uh with USIP. That uh relationship would end.
So, can I make a comment here?
Yes, please.
Um, having served on that board for a while and um and been involved in a couple of those situations where a few counties left the pool, um, I think this put a trem- the the policy, the way it stated, the way it was left before, the way it was, left a tremendous um liability for the remaining member counties. First of all, it was um, it was different than the industry standard. So if the same thing happened with one of USIP's competitors, um, they would not, and and someone left before that claim was resolved, they would not have access to um, you know, to continued coverage through that claim. Um, that was something that at one point was changed for USIP and and as kind of seen as a member benefit, but it has become an issue from the standpoint that um we, other self-insured counties like Weber County, have been stuck holding the bag for uh major claims from other counties who might have determined to leave the pool. And so I think it's a sound move. It's a wise move. Uh, it was voted on in the USIP uh membership meeting in St. George a couple of weeks ago and received unanimous approval there, but as you know, with um USIP being the type of organization that it is through interlocal agreement, that change can't take place and so every single county ratifies uh changes to the bylaws. And so this is a, this is a no-brainer for me. It's important uh that we move forward uh with the policy as it's been discussed uh by USIP. And I'm just going to say this one last time because I don't get the chance to do this very often. As I look back on twenty years plus of of uh involvement in this self-insurance pool, this indemnity pool, I'm not sure that there's anything the county government has done that, over the long term, has saved taxpayers more money than taking on the opportunity to insure ourselves. And um I am so grateful for the forward thinking of individuals twenty-plus years ago who came up with this idea, took some risk, fronted some money and said, we're going to go do this thing together. And and that's why it's important for me and I think for this county to continue to uh to support and be involved with this program, with us counties working together. Even when there are opportunities from time to time to save a little bit of money in a given year with a particular bid or a particular process, my belief, and it, I think it's been proven over and over again, that over the long term, the savings have been astronomical and and we ought to keep that in mind as we look through these processes. So um I'm, I'm a big fan of of. So I'm, I'm a big fan of the pool and the ability to, to self-insure ourselves together, and with that, of this resolution as well going forward.
I'll make a motion if you're ready, or when? Commissioner Harvey?
I didn't hear most of it because of my reconnection, so...
I've spent some time at the meeting, talking to different counties, and I think the, probably the most stirring is that to change the bylaws, all of the counties have to unanimously agree to it, which I believe really talks about the vetting process this went through. So I'm supportive of this also. So I'm open for a motion on Resolution 51.
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 51?
A motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
And Chair Evert?
Aye. It passes. Thank you very much. Item number eight, consideration of an interlocal agreement between Weaver County and Marriott Sladeville City for participation in the Project Jeremiah West, a community reinvestment project. Mr. Doug Larson. Thank you, Douglas.
Commissioners, good morning. Thank you so much for your time. It was a pleasure to be with you. Wait for just a moment for Fatima to pull up a map. Can you pull up the other PDF?
The other one?
This one's for the next. Great. Thank you. So you should have in front of you a resolution and an interlocal agreement, the interlocal agreement between Weaver County and Marriott Sladeville for what is essentially a tax incentive financing participation agreement that spans a course of 15 years. It's roughly 16-acre project area boundary at the west end of 12th Street. Many of us know the area by knowing where Jeremiah's Restaurant is. The developer currently owns 98% of, of the property to expand development on the 16 acres. It's roughly a $29 million project with an expansion of the existing restaurant, significant expansion of the hotel, as well as the development of a new reception and event center, and most significantly, a $19 million long-term care facility that will be located roughly behind the hotel. The project area map is up on the screen, and you should have a copy of that in the packet that we provided you. Important part of taxing entities participating in projects like this is to make sure that we evaluate and understand the net benefits of, of the project. And again, this request is coming from Marriott Sladeville, and their project area plan estimates that quality jobs for Marriott Sladeville and neighboring community residents, over three-quarters of a million dollars a year in estimated annual payroll from the expanded hotel, restaurant, and reception operations in excess of $2 million of payroll from the assisted living care center operation, which is important. Significant increases in sales tax and related revenues, increased property tax specifically important to Weaver County. And our school district, we're anticipating Weaver County's combined rate over the 15-year participation period. We will collect upwards of $700,000 cumulatively. That is in today's dollars. Currently, Weaver County is collecting a little over $19,000 a year off the project area. Post-project, where the project is estimating, Weaver County will receive in excess of $96,000 a year. So a significant increase over the portion of that 15-year period. The request is that Weaver County pass through 55% of the new revenue that is generated from the, from the project. So this is truly a post-performance project. We will continue to receive what we call the base year tax revenue, again, roughly that $19,000 a year, plus the 45% of, of the new growth revenue coming back to the county. With that brief outline, I've discussed this individually, which with each of the three of you, do you have any more questions or information that you need from me?
Commissioners?
Well Doug, I, you are...
I... Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I've, I've been, I've been aware of this presentation for quite some time, and also that the project, and I think it shows some good foresight, and I'm glad that some of the other districts have already participated in it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gibson?
Well Doug, I, I have tremendous respect for your expertise and, and ability to put these, these types of proposals together, and to protect, you know, the, the interest of the county, and as you've done, explain the benefits of what they mean to us. I guess just in following, in follow-up, is there anything specific in this proposal that we should be aware of? It, it meets our standards and our qualifications. I, I take comfort in the fact that, that we're one of the last to approve, so that means that others have, have seen confidence in the project. Is there anything that you can think of that we should know before we vote?
Probably two, two other points that I didn't cover. One, the request is that the county participate at 55%, and I did indicate that, but that's 5% higher than the school district and the other participating entities. And we're participating, the request is that we participate at a little higher level on property tax, because we'll enjoy the significant benefits of an increased sales tax revenue coming into the county directly. The, the other piece that I think is important, and I'm, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. Marriott Sladeville City is invested in this project. They are, they are committing upfront funds. They're not waiting for the project. They're, they have waived $1.1 million in upfront fees for the project to help the cash flow to get the project off the ground. Those are two things I think that are very important, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. I just want to say the three areas that, that I am happy to see is that we have a reasonable percentage. I appreciate the length, and I really appreciate the land use. And I think the land use is really, for me, what sold me, that I, that I felt very strongly that we had a landowner, developer, and business leader that understood the importance of the land use along that corridor, and was creating vertical tax structure that best utilized that infrastructure that was on-site. So I, I agree firmly behind this project for those three reasons. So that being said, are there any other discussions? If not, we're open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between Weaver County and Marriott Sladeville as described.
Resolution 52?
Number 52.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 52. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Fatima?
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Ebert?
Aye. It passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Douglas, for item number eight. You're also up with item number nine, a consideration of the Weaver Area Council of Governments 2017 Weaver County Local Transportation Fund Project Priority Recommendations. Mr. Larson?
Commissioners, thank you, and thanks, Fatima, for pulling up that summary. So at the December COG meeting, I was gonna say last week's meeting.
Eight days ago.
Time goes by quickly. So as you're certainly aware, and for the audience's benefit, we have the fortunate opportu... of course, our sales tax fund is in fact that 75% of the third quarter sales tax, and we manage that on behalf of the Weaver Area Council of Governments in Weaver County. And that's, that is designed by statute. Statute requires that we have an annual evaluation, or application process. We, for the past number of years, have had, have had our annual application due date, the first working Monday in June, we did that in 2017. We received 11 applications from various cities that you see in front of you as a summary, for some pretty significant projects, both sales tax projects. When I say sales tax, our sales tax funds are primarily focused on design, engineering, and construction. The quarter preservation dollars, of course, are, are strictly limited to what we would call right-of-way and right-of-way related expenses. And I would note that the quarter preservation dollars, by statute, are for roads only. Again, we, we received 11 applications in June. We have the COG, the Weaver Area Council of Governments has a transportation subcommittee that our office works through the summer with in evaluating the applications and the criteria associated with each of the projects and the funds that they, that the project is requesting. In the December COG meeting, the transportation subcommittee made a recommendation to the full COG. The recommendation that came out of the full COG is the summary that you see in front of you. And I would note that all of the projects were funded as requested, with the exception of the Ogden Weaver State McCady Bus Rapid Transit Project, where essentially that project, by the will of the COG, was put on hold or paused, and as the conversation ensued with the council of governments, the mayors and commissioners, that body wanted more time to deliberate on various funding scenarios and deliberate with various funding partners. So in total, as of today, the COG is recommending $19.9 million, and these are round numbers, in sales tax to support these projects, and just over $1.1 million in quarter preservation funds to support these projects, and they're programmed over various years. Do you have questions? That was a, that was a three, five-minute conversation that was six months worth of stuff, so...
It usually is, isn't it? Six months is a short term. We discuss things and vet them. Commissioner Gibson or Commissioner Harvey? Any comments? If there's no comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a comment, but I was hoping, I was wanting to see if Commissioner Harvey wanted to first, but if he's... Harvey, Commissioner, do you have anything you want to say? Should I move on? Okay. I'm not hearing him. Can I have that back on the screen, though? It just disappeared.
While that's coming up, I, I think it's, this is one of those things that has become so important, and an important role of, of the COG and this commission. We have tremendous unmet transportation needs in our community, and I'm really grateful that we have this dedicated source to address some of those needs. I look at some of the needs on this list, and I am just amazed at how much we're able to get with so little. I look at some of the important, the important things that would not be able to be addressed by an individual city without the, working together as a community to prioritize and come up with this funding source. without the, working together as a community to prioritize and come up with this funding source.